Good morning. The City of Boston's zoning board of appeal hearing for November 1st is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature regarding virtual hearings. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through March 2023. The hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom WebEx event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure that the hearing of the... I'm having a little trouble with my computer, but I can keep going. In order to ensure the hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page for the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment in the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions may be repeated throughout the hearing. Today's board consists of six members, one less than a full board. As a result, if any applicant would like to wait until a seven-member board is seated, you can seek an administrative deferral. So at this point, I'm going to take a roll call of the board members. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Dong.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Barazza.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Piñato.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Ujero.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. And is Mr. Hampton from the BPDA there?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Glad to have you. Mr. Fortune will now begin with the call of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of September 15th and September 27th of 2022. We need a motion.
Motion approved at midnight.
Second.
All right. Let me do the roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And I too am in favor of the motion passes.
Calling the first order for extension, calling BOA 946-25930, Cumberland Street. Name an address for the record, please. I believe Mr. Pratt is on.
Can you hear us?
Okay, good. Okay, yes. I'm at the Pride and Art, thanks for the project. My address, 454 Lowell Avenue in Mass.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Regarding 30 Cumberland Street, the board originally granted this relief on August 30th of 2019, and the board granted the first extension of this relief until December 5th of 2022, which included all applicable tolling. The applicant now is seeking their second extension of this relief until December 5th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Until December 5th of 2023, Mr. Ujero?
Yes. Yep, yep, yep.
Second. Secondary.
Okay. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
And I am in favor of the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 759-563-80MuginalStreet. Name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of a petitioner.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding 80MuginalStreet, the board originally granted this relief on December 15th of 2017, and the board granted the second necessary extension of the relief until December 17th of 2022, which included all applicable tolling. The applicant is now seeking their third necessary extension of this relief until December 15th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it's appropriate under the circumstances.
I have a motion, please. I believe Mr. Fortune referenced December 5th, 2023. Is that correct?
December 15th, Mr. Chair.
15th, okay.
Motion to extend the relief to December 15th, 2023.
Second.
Second, okay. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yep.
And I am true in favor of the motion passes.
Calling the 930 hearings. I'm going to call for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, this is the 930 cases only. If you are going to defer or withdraw, please give me the address.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
I have one. The address is, sorry, Mercer Street, 8 to 10 Mercer Street.
Thank you, Mr. Maranti. Regarding BOA 136-9883, 8 to 10 Mercer Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Chairman members, my client is making some design changes. That's going to require an additional community meeting. I would like to ask for a deferral. In terms of timing, I guess, I'm not sure where you are in terms of the agenda, Mr. Fortune, but if there were a later date in January, that would be adequate.
We can accommodate that.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yep.
I too am in favor of the motion passes.
We have January 31st.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals to the 930 cases?
Yes, I would like to defer the case number 13B.
What's the address, please?
Okay, it's 10 Woodhaven Street.
Okay, hold on two seconds. For the 930 cases?
Oh, is it for the 930?
This is the 930 only.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll come, we'll get to that point. Okay. Hearing now, I'm going to go call the first case, calling BOA 134-3873, 46 West Cedar Street. This is demolition of existing single-story brick and illegal roof deck above. New construction includes a new addition to the full rear of the existing house. This will be a one-story with a new roof deck above. There will be no extension of existing living space. The violation of Article 13, Section 13-1, existing and proposed FAR is excessive, and Article 32, Section 32-4, this is G card applicability. Name an address for the record, please. Is anybody on for West Cedar?
There is a raised hand. One second. David, is that you?
Yes, his name.
Okay. I'm going to make you a panelist, which may have me for a second. If you just accept the panelist designation and unmute yourself, just state your name and address for the record, please. I can't hear you.
My name is David McMahon, 535 Albany Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Okay, Mr. McMahon, can you tell us what's being proposed?
Yes. There is an existing brick L, one-story L, along the party line of the back of the building that was in disrepair, and it had an illegal roof deck on top of it. We propose to take that floor area of that one-story building and repurpose that space across the back of the building in order to make it across the rear portion of the structure. There would be a one-for-one swap, so there is no FAR change.
Okay. So what are the violations here? It's the existing and proposed FAR is excessive?
They actually, they are not excessive. They are the same number. The review, last review, the L had been demolished because it was in bad structural shape, and we are now trying to make sure that we can still use the FAR that had existed prior to that demolition.
Okay. I'm a little confused. So the FAR, the FAR of the proposed project will be the same, identical to the existing FAR?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a roof deck in this new proposal?
There is.
Okay. Can we see that on the?
Yes.
How is it accessed?
From the main house.
Yeah, but I mean, how?
There. One door that is in the middle, there.
So it opens, so it's not, so it opens... Yeah, I'm having troubles.
Oh, it's a walkout?
It's a walkout.
On the rear.
At the rear.
Okay, it's a walkout on the rear. All right. That's what I was looking for. All right. Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions for you?
No, no, no questions. I know there were some concerns raised by the neighbors in terms of water runoff. If you could please describe how you're mitigating that, that would be great.
So we have, we have a letter from the Boston Water and Sewer, where we, water retention.
Is Mr. Simonelli on? Mr. Early?
Yeah, yes. Let me get to that in a minute. I just wanted to do the drawings first. So, okay, Ms. Barazza, that's the only question you're raising?
Correct, because I didn't see that in the drawings.
Okay. Mr. Simonelli, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant. The recharge system will be designed to overflow on site and collect the roofs, the roof runoff.
Okay. Ms. Fortune?
Yes, we have the letters, Mr. Chair.
All right. Why don't we just deal with the groundwater issue? Let's entertain a...
Motion approved the G card.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yep.
And I too. Okay. So the groundwater matter is, we can set aside. Any other questions to the board on the proposal as a whole? All right. Is there anyone here to testify either in favor and opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Maggie Van Squire from the Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment on this case. This project went through the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission process, so they fulfilled Barrett Butters meeting requirement through that process. They also met with the Beacon Hill Civic Association on September 7th, and that organization issued a letter of non-opposition.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, we do have that letter.
From the Civic Association. Maggie, what did the Beacon Hill Historic Commission say?
I believe it was approved through their process, the Architectural Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raise hand at the moment.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
With a proviso to include, for it to be submitted to Beacon Historic for design review.
Well, it sounds like that's already happened.
Yes.
Okay.
It's already happened. It's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Then I think of Mr. Ujero's motion of approval by itself as adequate. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yep.
I'm in favor as well. The motion passes.
Thank you very much, Secretary.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 139-3201, 220 Clarendon Street. This is a change of occupancy include a cookie shop, use of 36A and street-level storefront. The violation is Article 8, Section 3, retail catering 36A cookie bakery is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Melissa Brochel, 1 South Broad Street in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Can you tell us what you're proposing?
Yes, sir. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Melissa Brochel, and I'm a store development manager for Insomnia Cookies. I've worked with this company for six years now. We are currently at 228 bakeries nationwide. We are requesting a conditional use 36A permit for takeout use for our retail space, 222 Clarendon. The space is already zoned as a commercial space, and Insomnia plans to fit out this space with our design, including equipment, restrooms, and utilities per our plans. The Back Bay area has, we have other locations locally within the, within the Boston area. We've got a location in downtown Boston and the Harvard area, where our team is already familiar with operating under city protocols, as well as conditions, seven days a week. Currently, right now, we are planning to have our operating hours from anywhere from either 11:00 AM or 12:00 PM to midnight as the, as the latest hour that we would be open. We have currently met with the, we have done the Butters meeting, and we've met with the Back Bay Association. And the, as far as delivery cadences are concerned, I know traffic was one of the big questions that was initially brought up. So we are trying to utilize bike delivery as frequently as possible, and we are trying to coordinate with our third-party delivery companies to try and minimize any traffic or congestion in that space specifically. So as far as any questions from the board, I'd be willing to answer anything that you have.
Okay, thank you. You answered a lot of the questions you would have asked. So if you're open until midnight, are your cookies creating insomnia or resolving insomnia?
We'd like to think that they're a little bit of both. There's a lot of sugar in them, so as far as, as far as, you know, being able to stay up late night as long as you've got a cookie craving, we consider it.
Okay. And are you, what's in the space now?
Currently, it is a vacant space. It was a fill-over space from LA Burdick previously, who's our neighboring tenant. They had space in there previously that we have now taken possession of.
Okay. And how much of a renovation was involved with preparing to open?
It's an interior fit-out. We do have to do some ducting as far as our HVAC is concerned, but it's minimal alterations.
Okay. I assume there'll be new signage?
Correct, yes. And we are prepared to submit for the Back Bay Architectural Review for that location as well, and I believe that that application has already been submitted.
But as far as the storefront is concerned, no change in the exterior?
Correct. We're maintaining the awning that's out front. We will be updating that to our brand, and then we will have some window vinyl that has been approved by the condo association as well as the landlord.
Okay. So it sounds like you have plenty of experience dealing with the issue with takeout?
Correct, sir.
Okay. All right. How are the drawings, Ms. Barazza?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor or opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Hello again, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Maggie Van Squire from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We held a Butters meeting for this project on August 17th, and this applicant met with NAB, the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, on September 12th, and they issued a letter of non-opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment.
Okay. And has this, you said it has gone to the Back Bay Architectal Commission already, or it has not?
For the signage, it has not.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, Secretary, here. We do have the letter. The mayor's office has spoken.
Okay. Anybody else want to testify?
Mr. Chair, I have no raise hands at the moment.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the following provisos. This petitioner only, the usual takeout provisos, and that they submit their signage for approval by the Back Bay Architectural.
Okay. Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yep.
I'm in favor as well. The motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 139-2781, 9 West Broadway. This is a costly roof deck, violation of Article 68, Section 29. The roof deck, the proposed penthouse offers the roof profile. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sean Regan, attorney, on behalf of the applicant with the business address of 28 State Street, Boston.
All right. Can you tell us what you're proposing?
Absolutely. I'm joined on the hearing today by the project architect Katie Kernizan and Andrew Pappas on behalf of the ownership. The proposal before you is for a penthouse and accompanying roof deck at 9 West Broadway, Unit 618. 9 West Broadway was formerly the Court Press Square Building, and this building and its sister building, the McClellan Building, were converted from industrial to residential use back in the early 2000s. At that time, penthouses with accompanying roof decks were included and approved in the plans by the city for all top-floor units of 9 West Broadway. Not all of them were built in the first phase of construction, and since that time, at least two have gone through this process and then approved back in the 2013-14 timeframe. Currently, there are at least seven of these originally proposed structures existing on the roof, as well as other mechanical superstructures. This roof deck itself will be built to match those that are existing with a front yard setback of five feet, a side yard setback of three feet. The penthouse will be approximately 100 square feet, and the deck itself will be approximately 740 square feet. The building roof has a parapet of approximately 3.5 feet, which shields all of the superstructures on the roof from view. We do have the support of the Shared Condo Association between the McClellan and 9 West Broadway, and those buildings have no other direct residential Butters and open for any questions.
Okay. So how many units are there altogether on the sixth floor? How many potential roof decks are there for this building?
So I believe this is the last one that was originally approved. I don't know the exact number count, but there are about six that are private, and there's one shared roof deck that is for those other units that do not have their own private deck. This deck will be a private deck as well. So this should be, if this isn't the last one, there is maybe space for one other, very small one, but I believe this to be the last one, Chairman.
Is there, and is access to all the other ones through a penthouse?
Yes, sir. They all match this, this access route, which is a penthouse. Yes, sir.
Okay. So you described it as being about 100 square feet, so that's really, does that room for anything besides the, the access itself and the door and the stairwell? Is this one of those expansive penthouses or just a de minimis one?
No, I think it's tough to see, but on the screen here before you, you see those green structures. Some of those vary in size, but that's what we're talking about. A few of the larger ones, the mechanicals on the, yeah, so that one there is, that on the, on the more zoomed-in one, the, this penthouse will be smaller than that. I think it'll, it'll just be where it sort of drops off there.
Okay.
You have the architect on if you need more specifics on that.
All right. How are the drawings, Ms. Barazza?
The drawings are adequate. I did notice that some of the penthouses have sloped roof, but this one seems like it's just flat.
Okay. So that may be something we would want to... And from the view from the street, Mr. Regan, you're saying that all these penthouses between the parapet and the angle are not visible?
Not visible from the street, nor any residential, there's no direct residential Butters, but across West Broadway or Dorchester Avenue, there are some residences, but though this building is taller than those, so they can't be seen from those, there is a, the tall hotel that's about 14 stories, and from those higher floors, you would be able to see onto the roof. But that's the only vantage point that would allow that. It is shielded from, from view from below.
Okay. Any other, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on this proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, ONS held a Butters meeting for Unit 618 on September 13th. The proponent answered all the questions, and one of Butter expressed their support. The applicant then went on to the West Broadway Neighborhood Association, where no objections to the proposal were raised. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
You have a raise hand, Anna. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The counselor remains opposed to roof deck proposals in residential neighborhoods of Article 68 that has had a negative impact on the quality of life for neighbors for years. However, this site lies outside of that zoning and in an industrial area, which included decks in plans approved in the early 2000s, with several approved city sense, Council President Flynn supports. Based on these reasons, I order supporting no concerns from neighbors and civic groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna, go ahead.
Thank you, my long ambassador. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, mine operates representing the carpenters union. Would you want to go on record for support of this project?
I have no additional questions.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, I do have one letter of support.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the volume of the penthouse to make sure that it's not in view in a public street.
Do you want to suggest a slow, a slow?
No. What, what they didn't show was a section. Typically, you can see a section from the street looking up and showing that it's not visible. Because it's one of the penthouses that is closer to the edge, I just want to make sure I just want to make sure that BPDA reviews that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Ms. Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
And IMES, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service as well, please.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 136-3933, 140 to 140 A.D. Street. This is a change of occupancy from a store, one family to two-family, a rear build-in addition, and interior remodel. Violation Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yards insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yards insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Zimiranti, with the business address 168 8th Street, South Boston. With me today is the owner Casey Tenny and the architect Jeff Gannett. This is a proposal to change the occupancy from a one-family in a store to a two-family, along with a rear addition, which will add approximately a total of 340 square feet of new space for Unit 1 and 2 floors. I think at this point, it's worth noting that this property has been taxed as a two-family since 1987, and has been operated as an existing two-family as well. The proposed design is staying within the footprint of the building above the first floor. New decks will be added in the rear with the new code-compliant stair to grade from all levels. The existing rear egress will be removed due to lack of code compliance. This proposal is located within an MFR sub-district. We were cited for five violations. Open space code requires 200 square feet per unit. Our proposal actually calls for 450 square feet, which negates this violation. Side yard setback we were cited for. Again, this is pre-existing at the footprint of the building, is not changing. Three feet is required by the code, and the proposal calls for zero feet as it is existing. The addition is approximately one foot on the left side and four feet, five inches on the right-hand side. The rear yard citation, from the proposed addition, we are approximately 20 feet from the lot line to the dwelling, but from the rear deck and the stairs, we are less than the required 20 feet, code requirement at approximately 12 feet. The rear yard, as you will notice, abuts a driveway that contains off-street parking in the neighborhood in that property. Additional lot area was insufficient. Code allows for 2,000 square feet for the first unit and 1,000 for each additional, and our proposal is at 1,160 square feet as it is existing. Unit 1, as you will see, it will consist of the garden level, which is the walkout level in the first floor. The actual slope declines as you go from D Street going to the rear of the property. It will be a one-bedroom in a den, as it is existing, a one-bedroom, but it will give it the additional space down on the garden level. Bed is located on the first floor. Den will be located on the garden level. It's approximately about 1,008 square feet. Unit 2, as it stands, is an existing three-bedroom that will continue to be a three-bedroom, located on the second floor and the third floor, at approximately 995 square feet as it remains existing. At this point in time, I'm going to open it up for any questions from the members of the board.
Okay, so it's described as currently one store, one family, and that you want to change it to a two-family. Has there been a store there, or has it been lived in as a two-family?
So it's been operating and lived in as a two-family since, as assessing department has assessed it since 1987. I guess historically, after speaking to the civic group members, I guess somewhere down the line, maybe 50 years ago, there was a previous storefront, but it's clearly that somewhere on the jacket that it was converted over to a residential at some point in time. But, you know, probably before I was even born. But again, yeah, so it's been operating as a two-family.
Okay, and you said the garden level unit is a walkout in the rear. What's the, what is the floor to grade height in the front?
So Jeff, Jeff Gannett, the architect, could give us the exact floor to grade height. I believe he's been elevating it as a panelist. Jeff, if you could chime in?
Yeah, at the front, street level you're asking, or street side? It's about three and a half feet at the front. If you look at the plans on the inside of the building at the garden level, that's a utility space. It's at the rear where we have more height that we can provide windows. So that's the side, that'll be the den.
So there are full-size windows? You have enough room for that?
Yep, the image on the upper right, you can see there's two large windows at that, at that level.
Yep, all right. And the access to that unit is what?
It's from an internal stair from the upper level of that unit, Unit 1.
Okay, and when you were talking about the rear yard insufficiency, you think that was triggered not by the building, the addition itself, or by the deck?
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right. Ms. Marazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak on the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information on the community process. ONS held a butters meeting on September 12th. There were some questions from butters about the history of the property, which the proponent answered fully. No further concerns, and at that, we refer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and no concerns expressed by neighbors or the civic groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a raised hand here? Coastline Trust, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, this is Casey Tenny. I'm naturally the property owner. I'm calling in from a business today. My property address is 174 West 7th Street. Again, I'm the owner of the property at 140 D Street.
Oh, okay, so I'll push back on you, thanks. I have no, with no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Second.
There is no need for designer review, is there?
No, it's very, it's very minor.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Ruggiero, second, and Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Ms. Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
And I'm in favor, the motion passes. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 136-3952, 584 to 586 East Broadway. This is an interior renovation of existing commercial and residential space. Occupancy change from one commercial unit yoga studio and two residential units to two commercial units. One yoga studio, one body art establishment and two residential units, and increase the living space in the residential unit. Violation Article 68, Section 7, a body art establishment. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adam Zimiranti with the business address of 168 8th Street, South Boston. With me today is the applicant, who is going to be the operator of the business here, Tori Arquette, and as well as the architect Nick Landry. The proposal in front of us today is a request for a conditional use permit to change the occupancy from two residential units and one yoga studio to two residential units. One yoga studio and one eyebrow enhancement beauty salon, which is considered a body art establishment due to one of the beauty enhancements that they actually perform, which I believe triggers an injection into the eyelid. So from that enhancement specialty is what triggers it to be considered a body art establishment. So again, I just want to make it clear for the record, this is not a tattoo parlor. As mentioned in the record, additional living space in the residential units, those plans, our plans in front of you today do not call for such as it was originally contained in the proposal, which was abandoned. So again, this is just specifically for the change of occupancy in the lower level, and that's where the focus is going to be. This proposal is in a zoning sub-district of a multifamily residential, local services. The building consists of a lower level, which is a walkout on the rear of the property, located on Emerson Street in the rear. A first-floor yoga studio, which is accessed on East Broadway, and two residential units on floors 2 and 3. The change of occupancy to include the eyebrow salon will specifically be located on the basement floor or the lower-level floor. At some point in time, there had been an occupancy for a nail salon somewhere along the years. After looking at the jacket, the nail salon was removed from that occupancy. This is the portion of the building which will have a full interior renovation for the layout of the eyebrow salon. As you can see from the drawings, the square footages will all remain the same. The lower level, where the beauty salon will be located, will be 1192. Level 1 will continue to be 1320 square feet. Level 2 will be 844 square feet, and Level 3 will be still at 740 square feet. At this point in time, we're going to open it up for, you know, any questions from the board.
So there was a nail salon in that space, but recently, there's been nothing?
Yes, correct. I don't, dating back years ago, there was, you know, there were formerly two commercial units because they're fully accessed from Emerson Street, that commercial unit, and the second commercial unit, which is located on the Level 1, is accessed via East Broadway. And at some point in time, it was just completely entirely dropped from the jacket, that it was only the yoga studio and the two residential units. So now they're converting back over to allow a commercial use in there, you know, for that lower.
And what has that lower-level space been used for up until now, recently?
It's been, hasn't been used or occupied as of now. I think it's just mostly has been like storage. Again, you could see from the existing condition in the drawings that it had like a layout to showing like there was some sort of like salon area if I was to look at a salon-type establishment.
And is it, is it underground, or what's this related?
No, it's above, it's above grade. So on East Broadway, you're above grade, and then it substantially drops when you get onto the rear of the property, Emerson Street. The adjoining abutting neighbors also have complete and entire walkouts of their property.
Okay, but it has, oh, yeah, I'm looking for elevations to show. Is there anything that shows the elevation of the lower level?
Right, right here.
Are there windows, or is it just a walkout?
So actually, I mean, it's...
Firefighter.
It's almost a storefront, basically.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Ms. Marazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate. Can you talk about accessibility for that, for that unit?
Yeah, I mean, it's open to the public, so they are going to have to comply with the handicap accessibility.
But I see, I see stairs, I see stairs at least to right in the interior. So it's not accessible, the unit is not accessible.
Okay.
Currently, Ryan, can I explain?
Yep, sure, you can jump in, yes.
So currently, it's being used as a hair salon, and it's, if you scroll up to the demo plan, right when you walk in off the street, they've got about a five-foot-deep area that's at that grade, and then it steps down to all the, to all the, each of the individual haircutting areas. So what we're doing is we're increasing that area right when you step in off the street. There's stairs there today, and there's going to be stairs there as this design. We have, this design can afford to put, if you keep going up a little bit, scrolling up.
Right there, that's, that's the stairs.
Yep, so we have room along the right side there, right when you walk in the door, to add a stair, sorry, a chairlift along the stair. But again, today, there isn't any access.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to offer public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. Our office held a butters meeting for this proposal on August 31st. Concerns were raised by butters about the impact of development of East Broadway on small residential streets like Emerson Street. Concerns were also raised about the increased noise in the neighborhood and about adding more bedrooms in the neighborhood without adding more parking. Butters did not want any roof decks on the property. Support was given, however, by the butters to the commercial space. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment board. Thank you.
Okay, well, as of now, I mean, the proposal in front of us only impacts the commercial space. So the other concerns don't seem to be relevant to this proposal in any case. Okay, anybody?
Frank, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Frank Knippenberg, 78th Street, in support of the project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and feedback from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna, sorry about that. No more additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the drawing be reviewed by the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dawn?
Yes.
Ms. Marazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
I'm in favor, the motion passes.
Great, thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 136-8775, 196 to 198 West Broadway. This is a change of auction, retail store to fitness facility. The violation is Article 68, Section 7, fitness facility is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Is the petitioner on for this project? Can you raise your hand? Okay, Rich? I'm just going to make you a panelist. Just a second. And then if you can unmute yourself again and just state your name and address. If you're talking, you can't.
There we go.
That's good.
Okay. Rich Rollin, 198 West Broadway. I am the owner of the company that is moving in and renting the commercial space.
Okay, so tell us who you're proposing, please.
Yeah, so we're taking a vacant salon for more than two years and converting it to a fitness facility that would enhance the neighborhood and basically taking the 1,200 square feet that we have available and just redesigning the inside a little bit. Nothing, I don't think anything structurally is changed with the building.
What kind of fitness facility are you proposing, and what would the hours of operation be?
Sure, so we're proposing a 24-hour fitness, which would have a scan code out on the door for valid members to use their phone, which is connected to a membership, to allow access 24/7. So much like a lot of other boutique gyms, they have limited hours, and I feel like it is a disadvantage for people who are paying for a full-time membership.
Will there be, is there like a reception desk or a security desk, or will there be staff there? Or is it strictly everybody come in on their own?
There will be staff at certain hours, but as of right now, people will be able to join or work out on their own.
Okay, and any changes to the exterior?
We did put some new storefront windows in to enhance the property and the appeal, and actually to bring it up to the rest of the beautiful neighborhood.
And new signage?
Yes, sir, already approved, and we're just waiting on a designer to finish the project.
Okay. Ms. Marazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate. When you said that the exterior signage was approved, you mean by the BPDA staff, they've reviewed the exterior signage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions on the board? Any public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Connor Newman, the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held a butters meeting on September 13th. Usually, there was some confusion in the neighborhood regarding the permitting process and order of operations, but that was cleared up by ISB. Since then, we've received a lot of positive feedback. On the meeting, there were two butters who expressed support, and one butter who had some reservations, but we understand that the applicant has continued to work with that family. We've received seven letters of support from South Boston residents, and the proponent had a positive meeting with the St. Vincent Lower End Neighborhood Association. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, here, we do have eight letters of support and one letter of opposition.
And what's the, what's the letter of opposition based on?
Posted a project, and you have someone's mother's name on this in regards to their support of the project. It doesn't sound a little bit detailed. I don't know if Mr. Lathan...
All right, is there anybody else who wanted to testify?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and compromises with the neighbors and civic group. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and compromises with the neighbors and city group. The councilor respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the community, community on any quality of life issues, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I would like to, oh, go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to put a motion of approval with a proviso for this petitioner only.
Is there a second? Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Ra- Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
And I'm two in favor, good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you for all you guys do.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-four-one-four-two-nine-eighty-three Corbett Street. This is a proposed change of one-family to a two-family, the violation is Article sixty, Section nine, the rear yards insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the side yards insufficient, and Article sixty, Section forty, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm, uh, Stephen Frank, I'm the owner of eighty-fourth Street, Dorchester, Mass. Uh, I propose to change my single-family, um, to, uh, two-family, uh, by adding or removing walls and doors. I'm going to add a kitchen on the second floor and then have a spouse staircase off of that kitchen. The first floor is proposed to be six-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet, and the second floor is proposed to be one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet. Uh, the overall footprint of the hu- the house will not change.
Okay, so you're, you're basically taking, um, a single-family and you're, uh, dividing it up into two, two units, one of which is six-hundred-and-eighty square feet, is that, is that what you said?
Yes, six-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet.
Okay, that, that's a one-bedroom, I assume?
Yes, that is a one-bedroom.
And the s- and the second floor is how many bedrooms?
It's two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, okay. Uh, but there's no, but there's no changes at all to the exterior of the building?
No.
Okay. Seems pretty, uh, and are you the owner?
I am the owner.
Uh, I mean, are you, I'm, I'm sorry, owner-occupant or just the owner?
Owner-occupant.
Okay, all right, um, seems pretty straightforward. Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate, just wanted to ask, what's the height of your ceilings?
Um, for which unit?
Uh, first floor and second floor.
Uh, the first floor is a hundred and five inches, and the second floor is, uh, ninety-two inches.
Okay.
Okay. Um, uh, all right, uh, any questions on the board? Uh, is anyone here to give testimony on the project?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Any, anybody from the Mayor's Office?
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hello, sorry about that, um, Eric James from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for eighty-three Corbett Street had an Butters meeting on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. They met with the Redefining Our Community Neighborhood Association, um, which ultimately chose to support them. Um, they also have one letter of support from the Redefining, um, Redefining Our Community Neighborhood Association. At this time, the Mayor's Office elected to first the judgment of the board on this matter, thank you.
Okay, my only question is going to either be for Eric or for the applicant, um, what i- what are the surrounding, uh, houses like? Are they single-family, two-family, what, what's the neighborhood context?
Um, to my left and to my right is a single-family, and on the other side of the street are all two-family and three-family.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other testimony? Yep, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
I'm in favor, the motion passes, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-three-nine-two-one-one-seven-one-eleven-sixty-one Adam Street. This project consists of twenty multifamily units, five floors with underground structured parking for each market rate unit. Site consists of eleven-sixty-one Adam Street and eleven-sixty-nine Adam Street, two lots. Both lots have an existing single-family story building on them which will be demolished. Violation is Article sixty-five, Section thirty-two, this is in the Neighborhood Development Overlay District. Article sixty-five, Section forty-one, off-street parking and loading. Article sixty-five, Section eight, the use of regulations for forbidden use in a one-F-five-thousand sub-district. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the草地 ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet, and Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is George Maranti, I'm an attorney with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members, for the record, while cited on the zoning code, refuse a letter, uh, N-D-O-D is, uh, design applicability, it's not a violation, and this project has been design reviewed by the BPDA. I represent William Calder, the buyer and developer of the property, who was here this morning. We're also joined by Cheryl Taguayus of Spalding Taguayus Architects, Cheryl is the project architect. The proposed project consists of a new five-story building containing twenty-nine residential units, primarily market rate with five affordable units, representing, uh, seventeen percent affordability, which is in excess of the city's inclusionary development policy. This is an Article eighty small project, which was approved by the BPDA in August of this year. The site is situated at eleven-sixty-one to eleven-seventy-one Adam Street in Dorchester, within a one-F-five-thousand zoning sub-district under Article sixty-five, the Dorchester Neighborhood Zoning District. Twenty-nine units will be served by twenty-nine garage parking spaces, as well as ample bicycle storage. The lot size here is approximately seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-six square feet, and is currently occupied by a single-story commercial building with warehouse for construction equipment and a former single-story dwelling building, which is currently unused. This is the site of Rentall Boston, which has been oper- in operation here for decades. Uh, much of the site is currently deeply excavated to the rear. The project will significantly enhance the site and the neighborhood by replacing the current commercial industrial building and warehouse with a new five-story residential building enclosed below gray parking, with twenty-eight residential condominium units on floors two through four, and a single unit on a partial fifth story greatly reduced in size from the floors below. The parcel is situated in close proximity to Baker Square with convenient access to MBTA trolley and bus routes, thus taking advantage of excellent transit access to downtown Boston. The project site is also within easy walking distance of all of the urban amenities of the Lower Mills neighborhood, including a nearby supermarket, pharmacy, restaurants, and coffee shops, and numerous local retail and convenience stores. The surrounding neighborhood consists of a range of building types and architectural styles with a mix of residential, commercial, and some industrial units. The project will still include twenty-nine onsite garage parking spaces despite that access to transit. Uh, the spaces in the garage would be accessed by our garage entrance on Adam Street. The replacement of the current commercial use and its associated vehicular traffic will allow for the closure of approximately thirty feet of existing curb cut on Adam Street, making for a better and safer pedestrian environment and also reducing the opportunity for vehicular conflicts. Direct elevator access will be provided from the garage to all floors. Ample security for resident bicycles will be provided on the first floor with direct access from the bike storage room to access street, and visitor bike parking spaces will also be provided in compliance with the City of Boston's bike policy. With respect to the zoning, while zoned one-F-five-thousand, the project is located in an area which transitions from lower-density housing to the east to higher-density and mixed-use developments as Adam Street approaches Baker Square. A variance is required for the multifamily use. The proposed multifamily use is not inconsistent with developing land use patterns in this area. To the left of the site is a four-story multifamily building approved by this board in two thousand and seventeen, with another multifamily to the left of that, and to the right and rear of the site are the facilities of the Sheet Metal Workers Union. Relief is required from off-street parking and loading requirements. As I say, the parking ratio here is one-to-one, which is still less than required by zoning, but appropriate for new residential development in this area. The FAR is a proposed two-point-three, while zoning allows a point-five. Relief is also required for the building's height, which is fifty-five-six inches to the top of that setback fifth story, while thirty-five feet and two-and-a-half stories are allowed by code. There's also a rear yard setback insufficiency, a forty-foot setback is required, while a setback of just under ten feet is provided. It should be noted that to the immediate rear of the site is parking a, uh, area for the Local Seventeen Training Center, and Local Seventeen has submitted a letter in strong support of the project. All-dimensional parking and loading provisions of the project were thoroughly reviewed and approved by BPDA Planning, Urban Design, and Transportation Staff during a fourteen-month review period. With that, I'll pause and take any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maranti, that was very comprehensively, basically answered most of the questions that I had. So this is, uh, these are condos, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and could you once again say what the, uh, percentage of affordable units is?
The affordability comes out at seventeen percent, uh, so that is an, an extra unit that my client is providing.
Okay. Um, and what is, what is the range of unit sizes?
Um, Cheryl Taguayus, uh, is on, I will ask Cheryl if she just wants to very briefly talk about the unit sizes and the, and compositions.
One second, um, Cheryl, go ahead, I sent a request on you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Cheryl Taguayus of Spalding Taguayus Architects with the business address of forty-six Waltham Street. Um, the one-bedrooms range in size from about, let me go to, if you could go to the sheet that has the, uh, typical fourth and fifth floor, that would be helpful. This shows the, uh, tip of one more floor, thank you. So eight-hundred square feet, there's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-square-foot one-bed, and the two beds go up to twelve-hundred-and-forty square feet. And there's a one-bed on this floor in the lower-left corner, unit number seven, which goes down to six-hundred-and-sixty-five. This top floor, the fourth floor, has a step-back of eight feet there, and that's why those units are a little bit smaller. So if you go back one slide to the second and third floor plan, you'll see that that, uh, bedroom, that corner unit, unit seven, is seven-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, with respect to neighborhood context, so you've got, you've got a, um, uh, um, it's a one-F, uh, one-F-five-thousand district, where you've had for decades, uh, commercial use in that space, correct?
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, this is the Rentall site. Uh, again, almost an eighteen-thousand-square-foot site, which I guess could be characterized as commercial-industrial.
Yeah, so and as I, as, uh, I think I recall when I looked at this initially, um, as you're facing it to the right, there is relatively small residential neighborhood, but to the left there, as, as you put it, there's, uh, there are similar multi-unit, uh, buildings already in place, is that correct?
Correct, it's, it's, it's right on the, uh, uh, the generous edge of, uh, of a transition zone as, as, as Adam Street goes down into Baker Square.
A generous edge, I like that, okay. Um, all right, uh, Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the drawings are adequate, and, uh, do you have a, do you know by any chance how many units are in one-one-five-seven, which is the property to the right? And then how many units are at one-one-seven-three, which is, uh, adjacent to you to the left?
So the property to the right, Ms. Barazza, that's the, uh, Sheet Metal Workers Union, uh, Local Seventeen, so that's the union hall. To the left is eleven-seventy-three, uh, which I actually represented before this board in two thousand and seventeen, so I happen to know that there are eight units in that building on a much smaller site.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, any questions on the board? All right, um, Mr. D'Amico, did you have your hand, your hand raised?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I just had one question. Um, is the access and egress to the parking area at the rear of the sidewalk?
Uh, at, at, um, at the rear of the sidewalk, uh-
Yeah. The reason why I'm asking is because if it is, uh, we're going to need, uh, an audio and visual, uh, alarm to, uh, warn the pedestrians of oncoming, uh, traffic exiting the, uh, the parking area.
Uh, the, uh, the, the driveway, Mr. D'Amico, does cross the sidewalk area, and, uh, if that is a concern, uh, you know, that's absolutely something that, um, that my client would, uh, would be happy to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is, uh, anyone here to offer public testimony on the project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Um, we heard a mix of opinions from the community regarding this project. Uh, some members, such as Local Seventeen, have written in support, uh, given that the proponent has added additional affordable unit as well as, uh, promised community benefits. Uh, many other residents also have written opposition, um, believing that the structure is too tall and too dense for that site. Uh, the Lower Mills Civic Association has written a letter, uh, where they expressed it was great working with the applicant, however, they voted to oppose the project. Uh, with that information, we defer to the board, thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary here, we have seven letters of opposition and two letters of support to Mayor's Office, Mr. Walker.
And the opposition is mostly density and height?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, um, Councilor Murphy here. I am here to voice my, um, I am in support of this project, so I want to go on record for being in support. I was at the Lower Mills meeting when this was brought up several times, but especially the last one. So I have heard the concerns in the neighborhood, but have also met with the developers and feel like overall this is going to be a good project, and they're addressing the concerns from the neighbors in a, in a very professional way. So please put me on record as in favor.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, minor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Ambassador, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, minor for us representing the Carpenters Union would like to go on record on support of this project.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
I'm in favor, the motion passes, good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, it's now ten-thirty-five, I'm going to call the ten-thirty cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. Um, if anybody has a case for ten-thirty and they want to either defer or withdraw, if you can give me the address first, please.
Uh, Mr. Secretary, uh, one Carmen and one A Carmen Street.
Thank you, sir, hold on two seconds, um, case BO, calling case BOA nine-five-zero-two-two-two-one Carmen Street. There's a companion case, BOA nine-five-zero-two-two-seven-one A Carmen Street. Name and address, fill the record, please.
Attorney Mike Ross. One International Place, business address. Uh, we are, have been requested to go back to, um, the Neighborhood Association and, uh, by the Neighborhood Association and, um, are seeking to do so, uh, with your approval.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Um-
Yes.
Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, the motion passes, do you have a date?
Yes, that would be January tenth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals to the ten-thirty cases only?
Mr. Secretary, four-twenty-three McClellan Highway.
Very much, uh, sorry, four-twenty-three, yes. Case BOA one-two-one-four-six-zero-four-four-twenty-three William McClellan Highway. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Timothy Fraser from the law firm Dane Torby, uh, one-seventy-five Federal Street, Boston.
Uh, can, why, why are you seeking a, a deferral?
Uh, so, so this, uh, parcel is actually in the East Boston Intimate Planning Overlay District. Um, so we're still in the process of applying for the iPod application, uh, and that's taking a little longer, as a request for deferral on that basis.
Okay. Uh, the, in, in truth, given that it's a six-member board, you can just request administrative deferral without a reason anyway, but, uh, appreciate you, uh, informing us. All right, can I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
Uh, yes, for me, uh, is there a date?
You'll also have a date of January tenth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, boy.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals to the ten-thirty cases? They're going to go back to the nine-thirty?
There's no raised hand, I'm sorry, um, Derek Joyner, can you look, can I get a deferral here?
Yes, uh, good morning, Chair.
What's your address, please?
Ten Woodhaven Street, Matapan.
Oh, thank you. For the record, calling DOA one-three-four-six-two-five-four, Ten Woodhaven Street. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Derek Joyner, Joyner Development, one-nineteen B Rindum Street. We're requesting, um, a deferral for community purposes. We would like to do a Neighborhood Association meeting and look forward to having a date for the next available.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
I'm in favor, the motion passes, do we have a date?
We will also have a January first, uh, January tenth of two thousand and twenty-three at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other, hands up for Madam Ambassador? Okay, we're going to go back to the nine-thirty cases. Calling DOA one-three-seven-seven-five-one-seven-two-sixty Rosendale Avenue. This is a removal of an attached garage, build a two-and-a-half-story addition in place of the garage, extension of living space to the basement for mudroom and additional gross area added to the first and second story in the place of the garage. Violation is Article sixty-seven, Section thirty-two, off-street parking, removal of the garage parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I have two hands raised here, Andrew?
Yeah, I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chairman and Board Members, my name is Andre, revert at fifty-two Metcalf Street in Medford, Massachusetts.
Okay, please tell us what you're proposing.
Uh, the current structure is choose-motor park a car inside of it, um, the- Uh, the current structure is choose multiple park a car inside of it. Um, the garage is used only for storage. Um, the current proposal modification will not change the parking number, and the footprint of the driveway currently accommodates two cars, which is the number of residency in the house. This proposal will not change the footprint of the house, and we will only add the square footage of what it is there.
So, in other, in, in other words, what you're proposing is to take an existing garage, uh, add, uh, the story and turn it into living space, correct?
Uh, it's not really a garage. It doesn't fit a car inside. It, you can fit a motorcycle. So we're not taking, uh, a parking space. Uh, we just, uh, modifying for living space.
Okay. And how many, how, what's the additional square, square footage that you're adding?
No square footage adding. Um, we're not adding any square footage. Uh, I mean, we not changed the, uh, house plan. We're just adding.
No, 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 I know. No, you're, you're, no, you're at, you're definitely adding, uh, you're building a two-and-a-half-story addition.
Right.
You're adding square footage. Uh, you're not changing the footprint. I get that.
Okay.
But how, how many square feet, uh, of, of, uh, living, living space are you adding?
Will be, uh, 600 square feet total.
Okay. And there's also addition of living space to the basement?
None.
No?
No.
Oh, okay. That's what it says in the, uh, in the posting, but, all right. Uh, okay. And, um, Ms. Barazza, there's no indication of additional living space in the basement?
No. It, it, it only has a mudroom. Uh, yeah, mudroom.
Okay. Um, do you have an ele, is there an elevation of the, uh, proposed addition?
No elevation change, no.
No, no, no. Is there a drawing elevation?
Uh, will be under the, uh, sort of a, um, on the screen.
Okay. Uh, okay. There we go. All right. Okay. The other question I have is that you have an existing driveway, right? Can we scroll, can, uh, can we scroll back up to the, uh, the floor plan? So you, so you said that the, um, that the, the little structure was too, yeah, there we go. That's fine. That the structure is too small, uh, to park any cars. So the drive, the existing driveway is being used for two cars side by side now?
Yes, plus the street park and when is available.
Okay. But, I mean, this is actually, the existing arrangement is, is front yard parking, uh, but you're not proposing to, to change that. All right. Well, uh, we'll have to think about that. Uh, how are the drawings, Ms. Barazza?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board? Uh, is there anyone here to offer testimony of, on the project?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Ujwan Ochi with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, we held a meeting for this project on September 14th. We had about two meetings at this point to further go over the parking spaces and to clarify what was happening for neighbors. We had one neighbor's report at the meeting, and there were some concerns over the height of the structure blocking the sun. Um, they received support from their closest neighbor association, which is the West Village Neighbor Association. They received their, uh, letter of support from State Rep Consalvo and 24 other letters of support from neighbors in the area. And at this moment, my office worked at the front judgment to the board.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here. We only have one letter, and it is from, uh, Representative Consalvo. No, no letters from the community.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, also, uh, I'd like to clarify that I'd go record in support.
Um, I have no additional ways to answer at the moment.
All right. There's no further testimony. I entertain a motion.
Have another hand up.
Sorry about that. Yep. Uh, registered Stephen Murphy. Second. Sent a request and mute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, you're on mute. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, that was me. We can't hear you. You're speaking, uh, Mr. Murphy. Um, I'm not sure what else to do now here. Um, other than that, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. Then I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review and a proviso that there would be no front yard parking.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
I, to support the motion and passes. Uh, good luck.
Calling the last case for 9:30, calling BO, BOA 137-0747, 124 to 126 Kendrick Street. This is in addition to work on existing property, an interior demolition, new kitchen, new bathroom. The violation is Article 51, Section 8. Use is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9. The foyer ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9. The building is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9. Side yards insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Sumeranti with the business address of 168 H Street, South Boston. Uh, it will be today is the applicant Brian McGrath and the architect Mark Sangio. Uh, the current site consists of an existing non-conforming four-family structure within a 1F 5000 sub-district. This is a proposal to change the occupancy from four units to eight units while preserving the existing three-story structure and adding a new two-story addition to the rear of the structure. Uh, the applicant has committed.
Which makes no sense to me, you know, and you're just like, hey.
I'm sorry. I'm just muted.
Thank you. Am I ready to move on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, great. Thank you. The applicant has committed voluntarily to enter into an affordable housing agreement with the BPDA to offer one unit as affordable. Uh, that unit has been, uh, has been identified as Unit 2 at a 100% AMI. Uh, there will be a total of 12 parking spaces. Five parking spaces, uh, will be located, uh, underground as, as you can see from the plans. Um, there'll be garage parking there and seven outdoor spaces where there is existing front yard parking, as you can see. Uh, parking will be accessed by an existing 15-foot passageway, uh, that is entered into 120, uh, Kendrick Street. This is a 12,000 center and 90-foot square foot lot with a total of 10,200 square feet of living space. The eight units will be approximately 900 square feet to 1561 square feet. The basement plan will consist of garage for five vehicles. The first floor plan will consist of units one through four. The second floor plan will consist of.
Yeah, I'm muted.
Five through eight. The third floor plan will consist of additional living space for units five and six, as well as the placement for mechanicals. The proposed FAR is a 0.8 and what is allowed by is a 0.5.
Are you?
Building height is under code at, uh, building height is under the code, but we were cited for the existing non-conforming of, of the, uh, three stories when what was required is a 2.5 stories. Front yard, we're proposing 16 feet, 2 inches. 20 is, is what's required by the code. This is pre-existing as the current structure, uh, is at six, 6 foot, 4 inches. Uh, the side yard, uh, we're proposing at a 5 foot, 7 inches on the left and 18 feet, 2 inches on the right. The 12, 12 feet is required by code. Uh, rear yard is 15 foot, 1 inch, and 40 is what, uh, 40 feet is what is required by code. Uh, at this time, I'm going to open it up, uh, for questions.
Okay. Um, so you've got a four-unit, uh, building. Hang on one second. Um, uh, you've got a four-unit building on a 1F, uh, district, correct?
Yes.
And you are looking to expand that to eight units?
Correct, yes. Um, as, as you see aesthetically in the surrounding neighborhood, there are many other, uh, multi-family homes, uh, on the left and on the right-hand side, including in the rear, and I believe that's approximately about 28 units, uh, if I am correct.
Okay. I, I just pulled this up on, uh, Google. Uh, what is, what is the number of units to the building on the right? That's sort of the boxy building with a mansard or sort of quasi-mansard roof?
Um, I'm going to have to defer. Let me see if, if Mark.
Four. Hi, everybody. Mark Sangio, architect. It's four units on the right, and I believe, um, is it six or eight on the left? I don't remember. And the other thing about this property is that, um, it's kind of like on a apartment street, and it's set down from the, from Kendrick, um, behind a retaining wall. So it's kind of like a little isolated area on its own, and behind that is a quite extensive, uh, parking complex.
Okay. Um, it does seem like it's a, a pretty dramatic, uh, in, increase in the, in the number of units. All right. Um, uh, and, and are these going to be condos or rentals?
They're going to be rentals.
All rentals. They're currently rentals now?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, given that it's in a neighborhood where people are concerned about a lot of kind of, uh, college students, undergraduates, who, who is, what's the demographic of the, uh, the, the marketing?
Uh, Brian, I'm going to have to defer to you as, as the applicant. You could probably give us a little bit more information as far as the marketing.
I'm sorry, what's the name of the panelist?
Brian McGrath.
Brian? Okay. Brian, if you could accept the panelist designation and then unmute yourself? Brian, are you speaking? We can't hear you.
Okay. Well, while, while, while we're doing that, uh, Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Are you concerned about, uh, density or?
Well, I, I would like to hear Jeff Hampton's, um, review of the project, uh, because it, it is accurate that it is almost on its silo. Like, it's very separated in regard to the residential fabric. So I would love to hear Hampton's review on this as well.
Okay. Well, let me, but you, you don't have any other comments?
No, no, because it, it's very, it, it almost doesn't really contribute to the public life or sidewalk, because it's kind of, the masonry kind of edging that is, that exists in front of the property.
Okay. Any, but.
It's depressed, sorry. It's depressed from Kendrick Street. So Kendrick Street, and then this, this whole apartment row or whatever is set down quite a bit.
Yeah. I mean, from the terrain, the, the, the grade went down. Yeah. Okay. Uh, before we get to Mr. Hampton, any other questions on the board?
Is there a landscaping plan?
We don't have a landscape plan, but I'm sure the BPDA will require us to work with them and their landscape architects to produce one.
Okay. Mr. Hampton, uh, thoughts on the project?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend to deny it without prejudice. Um, we believe that they already have adequate use of the property as a four-family within a one-family district. Uh, we understand that they have committed, um, through the process to have one of these units as, uh, an affordable unit. Um, however, going from four to eight, uh, we think that the proposal is excessive.
Okay. And I mean, are, and is that, uh, in, in regard to Ms. Barazza's comments, is that site-related, or is that you just think that's just too big a jump?
Too big of a jump. Yeah. It's just doubling the size when they already have four units there.
Okay. All right. Um, is there anyone here to testify in favor or in opposition of, uh, the proposal?
Uh, yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Alston Brighton liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, here to testify that, uh, we had some Butters in opposition on the basis of the rear setback, uh, some concerns about line of sight being blocked. Uh, Butters also had concerns about density as well. Um, the proponent went before the Brighton Alston Improvement Association and got the support of the BIA. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board.
Wait, and they got the support of the BIA?
Uh, yes, I believe, uh, I'm not sure if Annabelle Gomes is on, uh, to testify as well, but, uh.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else to testify?
Secretary, secretary here, Mr. Chair. Uh, we do have letters of support.
Okay.
Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. Um, the, the project is setback from the street. It is invisible. The only thing you'll be able to see is the current peak of the house. The house is in disrepair, so, uh, this, uh, developer has been known to restoring the properties, uh, to their original, uh, standard and actually beautifying it. So we're comfortable with that they will restore the original house, and the addition in the back is actually not really visible to anybody. It backs up to the trees behind, um, what is it? The Kendrick apartments. So it's not really that visible, so it won't impact the street view of any changes. Um, the parking in the front, it's not street parking. It's, it's a private road back there. It's, uh, shoveled by the owners, not by the city, and it's not visible from the street. So there is no impact on this, on the community. So if we are looking to add additional housing units, this is a perfect place for it, and the fact that he's willing to give one affordable unit when he doesn't have to, we commend him, and we'd like to go record in support.
Thank you.
I have no additional ways to answer.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Ms. Barazza, this is Tom. Can I suggest an additional proviso that the ISD identify units who isn't, uh, affordable yet?
That's, that's correct. That's why I was actually applauding, because we do need housing with the proviso that one of the units be set to be affordable.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, and I think the BPDA Design Review should really kind of, uh, Ms. Gomes' comments were helpful in terms of understanding the context, but I also know density is, it's a big, it is a big jump, so hopefully make a look at that. All right. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
I, to him in favor. The motion passes.
Thank you. I'll have a nice day.
Thank you. And we, uh, got to 10:30. It's not even 11.
It's a miracle.
Calling the first case for 10:30, calling BOA 139-5028-516, Sumner Street. This to confirm, architect, is a three-family in store and changed to a four-family. Renovate the building, including adding a rear addition, a roof deck, and extend living space to the bottom floor. Violation, Article 27G, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 8, multi-family use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot areas insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building has excessive heat. And Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Dreggo, Dreggo and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the petitioner. Uh, and we also have Adam Glassman, who's the architect on the proposal. Uh, just a point, oh, we are, we did remove the roof deck, and the plans that, uh, Ms. Barazza has should, uh, show that. Um, the proposal now is we're seeking to change the occupancy, as was mentioned, from a three-unit building to a four dwelling and to completely renovate, um, both the interior and exterior of the building, and then add a, uh, rear addition that is 7 by 19, uh, feet. That addition will basically add a second means of internal egress stairs to the property and also add a bathroom to each of the units. The beta, the bottom level, lower level, this is a good picture of the existing structure. So we're not building up, uh, or out on the sides of this building. That, uh, lower level is existing. As you can see, it has seven-foot, seven-inch ceilings, has full walkout, uh, in the rear, and, uh, will have an entrance at the front. Years ago, that was used, probably not legalized, but used as a store, like a, a community store that folks, uh, went to a variety store years before. Uh, the layout, uh, of the unit, so that bottom level would, uh, as unit one, would be 1,120 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath. I had mentioned that would have seven-foot, seven-inch ceilings height. The, uh, unit two, at the upper level on the second floor, is a three-bedroom, two-bath with a, at 1,020 square feet. a thousand twenty square feet. We go up to unit three and that's a three-bedroom, two-bath at 1,050 square feet. And then unit four is 1,075 square foot, two-bedroom, two-bath. As was mentioned, we originally did have a roof deck, that was removed from the proposal, so there were no decks on the building. The violations that were mentioned, so this is a 3F district, although there are apartment style complexes around us as well. We are proposing four, so a use violation was triggered. Additional lot area, we have 500, 1,000 would be required. Our existing FAO is 1.23, so we would be proposing 1.94 and 1.0 is what's allowed under the code. The height is not changing, it is set at four stories, 42 feet, 3 inches, but what is allowed is pre-existing violations, so it was triggered. It's three stories, 35 feet. Open space, we had 890 square feet and what would be required is 1,200. And then we are a close walk to Maverick T Station. We are not adding any additional parking because we're keeping the building. In these pictures, you can see all the elevations and you can see that lower level, you can see the height and size of that back. You can also see in this picture, we're removing existing rear decks that are on the property and this new addition that would house the internal stairs. And bathroom on each level would not go any farther than the existing exterior decks that are there now. And so we would still maintain a 34-foot rear yard setback on the building. I can pause to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, so well, you, the last comment answered the question I had. So the addition is the same footprint as the existing exterior...
Actually, a little bit smaller, Mr. Chairman, so a little smaller than the existing decks, but those are exposed rear decks, so...
Okay, but you said, but you have the same rear yard, unchanged rear yard setback?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. You know, I don't have any other thoughts or comments. Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions on the board? All right, can we go into public testimony, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Talia Venitas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a Butters meeting for this project on June 22nd. There were very few Butters that attended the meeting. Their main concerns were the density of the street and the parking in the area. The applicant met with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association in July and August, as well September. The membership voted to support this project with nine in residence in support and eight in opposition. Those supporting the project appreciated that the applicant will be preserving that existing tree and the building height remain the same.
Are you on more than one device? It was an echo.
I am, yes.
You may want to come off of 101.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So those supporting the project appreciated that the applicant will be preserving an existing tree, that the building height will remain the same, and the roof decks were removed from the original proposal as part of the community process one. Our office has received eight letters of support for this project and at this time our office would like to defer judgments to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, secretary here, we do have those letters of support. We also have one letter of opposition in regards to parking.
Okay. Anybody else?
Steven, Senator Anderson, we're going to get testimony here? If not, I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, Ms. Dreggo, one question. You said that at some point that lower level was used as a neighborhood variety store. What's it used for now?
It's just stead space, storage space, so...
And it's been like that for a while?
Correct. And there's no utilities down there, Mr. Ehrlich, so in the new renovated building, all utilities will be in every unit, so...
In the units themselves?
Correct.
That was my follow-up question, thank you. All right, if there's no further testimony, then I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Can I just, just the whole, the tree that they mentioned that's going to be removed, can we just put in some proviso that they work on with Designer View of a street tree or just...
Mr. Rogero, sorry to cut you off, but we're actually preserving the tree, so we're not...
All right, so just if some reason it's going to come down during construction, that they put another one back.
Okay.
Just make sure you name it the Joe Rogero tree, please.
It's a big thing over here, so I'd like to see...
I know, I wasn't kidding.
Yeah.
All right. There's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
And I, too, am in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling your next case, calling VOA 133-2107, 548 East Third Street. This is demolition of a single-family detached house, new construction of a three-unit residential building with parking. Violation Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive in Article 68, Section 8, the lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Pettipass, 7 Stimson Street, West Rock Street. I'm the architect for the project. There's an existing single-family, two-and-a-half-story, single-family on site which the intent is to remove. It's in pretty, it's in pretty bad structural condition anyways and needs either to be completely renovated or removed. And in this place, we propose this three-unit building to be installed with onsite parking in a garage in the lower level. The violation for the roof structure through the community process, we've actually eliminated the roof deck, so we probably will not be needing the relief on the roof structure. It will be three, two-bed, one-bath units with parking below. And there are several buildings in the area. Five doors down, there's a four-story building and two doors down around the corner, there's another four-story building. And in fact, this particular project almost identically mimics the project that was built at 194 K Street, which is literally around the corner.
Can you tell us about the unit sizes?
Sure, the units themselves, they're small. They're 974 square feet each, and that's per floor. Each floor is identical from one to the other.
Are these for sale or rental?
Oh, no, they're rentals. The owner intends on using two of the units for himself and family and the third unit will be intended to be rented out.
Okay, very good. All right, Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions on the board?
I mean, I just want to, I do want to let the board know that the context is majority three stories and there are some buildings with a little bit of a setback on a fourth.
So are you saying it fits into the context?
No, so just because there's one example that replicates exactly what is being proposed doesn't necessarily mean that it fits with the context. What is in the context is majority three-story buildings.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, again, any questions on the board? Any public comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, calling Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information on the community process, ONS hosted a Butters meeting on July 13th. With community input from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, the proponent removed roof decks from their proposal. Some of Butters had expressed concerns about additional strains this project may have on off-street parking. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anna Callen from Council President Flynn's office. The council will like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors at the meeting regarding parking, as well as the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, who indicated they were unaware that the plan was to tear down the existing building. The civic group stated it was their understanding that the existing structure would be modified to minimize the impact on the Butters as a result of these reasons, Council President Flynn is opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council of Quinn, as well as Article 60 violations, Council would go on record in opposition.
Thank you.
Robert D'Amico?
Yes, Robert D'Amico, BTD. I think there's a little bit of a problem with aduverability and in my opinion, I think the number of spaces should be reduced from three to two. Thank you.
Okay.
Then I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. All right, so we have Mr. D'Amico's comments, it's more appropriate for two as opposed to three in terms of the number of parking spaces. You heard the rest of the testimony, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two proviso. One is to reduce the parking to two and the second is to undergo BPDA Design Review to pay special attention to the fourth floor, to set it back, so it fits better with the context.
So the front face would be setback, that's what you're suggesting?
Correct, to review that massing on the fourth floor.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I make a comment?
No, no, we're, we're support now. Is there a second to Ms. Barazza's motion? There's no second?
I'd like to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second to Mr. Rogero's motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Aye, yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Rogero?
Yes.
And I, too, will support that motion for denial without prejudice, so Mr. Dreggo is looking to come back with the modified proposal.
Thank you.
Calling your next case, calling VOA 130-6137, 944 East Broadway. This is remove the gable roof and install a flat roof, construct a new infill addition at rear and add new front deck and above the existing front entry, install new rear decks, install new oriel window along the driveway. Violation Article 68, Section 8, side yard insufficient, Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mrs. Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tim Johnson, architect, 599 East Broadway, South Boston. A two and existing two-and-a-half-story attached three-family building. We are proposing to demolish the existing gable roof and add a flat roof to create more spacious living area at the third floor, similar to the units below. This project will contain the existing three two-bedroom units with an average size of 1,700 square feet. There's no change to occupancy or to the existing park, rear parking. However, unit one will be a duplex unit. We are proposing to capture some basement space as a media room for unit one. Zoning relief requests are required, would be side yard insufficient. You can see a picture here of the existing building with the gable roof. Next slide, please. This would be the media room or the living area that we are capturing for unit one in the existing basement. Next slide, please. You can see the hatched area at the bottom right of the drawing, that shows the infill area up against the blank masonry party wall of our Butter. That's why we need side yard relief. This shows you one. Also, the foyer from the driveway, the rear driveway to the Lula elevator, which will access all floors. Next slide, please. Second floor plan. Next slide, please. Similar to the, this is a new third floor plan, which would have the flat roof, so we're opening up the entire space as the units below. Besides side yard relief, we are also asking for usable open space relief. However, each unit will either have a newer existing front balcony and/or rear deck. Next slide, please. So you can see we at the, where the new roof is being added at the third floor level. Street elevation showing the new roof. We have the existing balcony over the front entry with a new balcony above it at the third floor. Along the driveway, we are adding the large picture windows, which will have views out to the bay and our rear decks. And the rear elevation, you can see we have infilled the area between the Butter on the right, which is a blank party wall, creating some additional living space. We have a trash corral at the bottom right of the elevation recessed into the building and then the entry door to the Lula elevator foyer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. So the, what is the current condition with the side yard insufficiency?
The, well, in Article 68, they did not include on side yard requirements that if you're an attached building on one side...
No, I guess I'm, I want a simpler question. It's currently attached, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, the building is attached. There is a small, there is a small area void in the rear between the two buildings that we're infilling. That's where they're triggering side yard.
Okay, but for the most part, it's an existing condition?
It's existing condition, existing footprint.
All right, all right.
Yes.
And the, what is the floor-to-ceiling height of the lower level of the media room?
It would be eight feet if we can go back to a building section of...
And is this Lula, does this elevator require a pit? Do we have to, will it have to be excavated out?
The Lula elevator only requires a 12-inch-deep pit, the model that we're proposing, so it's minimal excavation for the pit and it will access all floors. I'm sorry, there we go. And so there's, we have a nine-foot floor-to-floor at the lower level, so approximately eight foot to finish ceiling.
Got it, okay. And with the flat roof, again, I assume this will sort of end up, if approved, with the kind of look of a traditional triple-decker?
Yes, if we can scroll all the way to the beginning of the drawings to see the 3D view, yes. We'll pull the detail off of budding buildings. Keep going all the way, please. So you can see we have the dentil work, a very strong cornice at the roof plate, two-to-one proportion windows with grills.
Got it. Okay, Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate. I do have a couple of questions. What is, what's the width of your driveway, your total width of clear access for cars?
Well, it is a shared driveway, so it's, the clear width would be 14 feet plus or minus, seven foot on my client's property and seven foot on the Butter property to the right.
Okay.
And is there, is there an easement for use for that shared driveway?
As far as I know, there is an existing easement on record for that driveway. Yes, it's an existing condition.
And can you just please confirm that in the adjacent party wall of the brick building, there are no existing windows? Were you going to abut two?
Yes, if we scroll down to the existing drawings, excuse me, the pictures of the existing...
Yeah, I'm kind of seeing it a little bit. I just want you to confirm that there's no windows.
Oh, no, there are no, there are no windows on that side of the party wall.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't have further questions.
I just, I just got a question about design and this isn't my necessary area of expertise, but why wouldn't you just continue the brick brownstone look on this building and not introduce a completely different, like, the existing building looks kind of funny to me to begin with. I don't know why the triple-decker, I don't know why we wouldn't just continue the brownstone look on this new building to match everything there in that row.
Well, good question. It is an existing wood frame building. Due to cost, could be one reason we stayed with the wood frame construction instead of introducing brick veneer. We can certainly address that further at BPDA Design Review. But along this street, East Broadway, there are numerous examples of the iconic triple-decker and that's the model that we're emulating on this project. But we can certainly address any issues like that at BPDA Design Review.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on the board? All right, is anyone here to testify for or against the project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, at this time the Mayor's Office like to refer to the judgment of the board, some background information on the community process, our office hosted a butters meeting on July 27th, proponent answered all questions from the butters and stated they had made some changes after initial conversations in a butter input. Most of the butters in the meeting were positive towards the proposal, there wasn't a butter on P Street who expressed some concerns regarding the vents on the roof. At this time, ONS has received one email in opposition, at this time we defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council President Fling's office, the councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process, compromises with the neighbors and feedback from the butters, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, sorry, we have one letter of support, one letter of opposition.
John Burke, you hand this way to him?
Yes, I'm not sure if I can add anything to to what Tim said, but I've owned the building for almost twenty years and it's a hundred years old, needs some TLC and it needs a fashion, you know, a makeover if you will. I've used it as a rental unit with my three children through various stages of their life, they're going to school, have used it and I continue, we plan to continue it as a rental unit in Minnesota, so. I grew up in South Boston, I have a lot of family there and my nephew Chin, who is going to be in the building, so, and then a very sense of what the neighbors have said and will continue to do that as we move forward.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll say Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review. Just a comment on the style, the existing house is, does work on a kind of Victorian typology. I will leave it up to the architect working with BPDA and what kind of makes work within its context.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Don?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 139247871 Proctor Street. Mister, combine 6971 Proctor Street with parcel to be known as Lot 71 on one lot at 71 Proctor Street, construction of a new four-story academic facility of approximately eighty-three thousand five hundred square feet. Violation of Article 50, Section 32, elementary or secondary school use is conditional, Article 50, Section 33, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 50, Section 43, off street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Kevin Patrick Joyce, law firm, Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center in Boston. With me today, I have, on behalf of the applicant, Susan Pollack and John Verley from Roxbury Prep, I also have Bob Baldwin, who is a project consultant, and the architect, Matt Rice from SMMA. If it pleases the board, I'll dispense with the zoning review and let Mr. Baldwin walk us through the process that we've completed with our two-day waiting process, the neighborhood process, and provide a detailed overview of the program.
Thank you, Kevin, Bob Baldwin here, 375 Acorn Park Drive, Belmont, as a development consultant for the school. If we can actually scroll up a little bit, I'll go through this presentation fairly quickly, right there is good. So this is a new school for the Roxbury Prep Charter School, it has been around for twenty years, scroll down now. The demographic, it has three middle schools which are grades five through eight feeding into one high school. The high school has been around for about five or six years but has not had a permanent home during that entire period. They are currently located in temporary spaces, one in Hyde Park and one in Nubian Square. The school's demographics, as you can see, are really mirror the BPS and the city of Boston student population. Next slide. This slide really is just meant to show that the location in the New Market area in Roxbury is ideal for the student population, as you can see in the right-hand side. The darker blue reflects where most of the population comes from, it is the Roxbury Dorchester neighborhoods and the primary transportation routes feed very well into this area. Next slide. The site itself is a, is a, right now, and no longer in use, but was last used as really a construction yard with a few warehouse-type buildings and one, I would say, dilapidated residential building, I don't think has been occupied for decades. The location again is really excellent for the school, we really appreciate the, all the public transportation routes, which I'll get into, some of the organizations, like the base that is just across Clifford Park, and in fact Clifford Park being directly a budding, we think we can provide a lot of good synergies to look after the park and the park could be used as an asset for the school. Next slide. Just briefly showing you the transportation routes, because I think this is critical for why we think this is a good spot for a school. Here you see all the bus routes and in fact the Fairmont Line, many of our students have access to the Fairmont Line and we look to bring, you know, really the ridership on the Fairmont Line up quite a bit. Both high school students as well as at least seventh and eighth grade students receive MBTA passes and utilize this public transportation, they do not get the yellow school buses. Next slide. So with regarding transportation focus, we have, we bought both Magazine Street and Proctor Street. One of the first things we heard in our discussions with the BPDA and the overall New Market planning was that Magazine Street should remain as open as possible. So we focused all of our pedestrian and main front, front door access on Proctor Street, so pickup and drop-off, et cetera, will take place on Proctor Street. The only use of Magazine Street will be accessing our forty-six parking spaces for staff only as well as rubbish removal and limited loading, we don't get a lot of loading. So we've really kept that quite open, there's no pedestrian, there's no reason why any pedestrian would access the building off of Magazine Street. The pickup and drop-off activities will occur on Proctor Street, we've coordinated with both the Red Cross, who has a food bank down the road, as well as the Mason Street, Mason School, right there on Norfolk, to make sure that it is all works well, we've worked, of course, with BPDA on that. Next slide. Just a little site context, we can, I think, roll right through this. So again, here's our ground floor plan, it shows the forty-six parking spaces which are largely covered by structure above. We have activated the Proctor Street with placing our dining commons there with a lot of glasses, you'll see in the final slides, as well as our main entrance. One thing to note here is on the lower right-hand side, you'll see four orange rooms identified as admin, those have been redesigned to now include mostly in that area a bicycle, a bicycle room, per BPDA and BTD recommendations. Next slide. Second floor you can see is where we have a gymnasium, this is a full-size gymnasium for the both high school or middle school basketball or other programs. It includes a stage for drama programs, some health facilities, and we start to get into our classrooms. Next slide. The third and the fourth floors are very similar, we have a classroom, a row of classrooms, again overlooking Proctor Street, the gym is open to below and we have science labs. Next slide. Again, the fourth floor, as you can see, is very similar, this is where much of the classrooms take place, we just have a few more classrooms here because the stage is double height and now we can pick up more classrooms. You can roll through this, this looks like a duplicate. And here are some images from Proctor Street, this is where we are currently today, having gone through quite a bit of design, a review and discussions with the BPDA. Let me point out, the entrance here, one of the changes we made was a request from all sorts of folks to expand the sidewalk on Proctor Street, so it actually comes in where the entrance is quite a bit and throughout it's, I think, three or four feet wider than it is today to the property line, so that with our pickup and drop-off and student pedestrian access, we have more room to accommodate that. Next slide. This is also from Proctor Street, really looking at it from Clifford Park. Next slide. This is from Magazine Street, you can see that on the foreground, on the real foreground is a building owned by the city of Boston that currently exists, and then we have a classroom wing where the science labs are and the gym. And lastly, this is just sort of an image to set it in the context for what's around it, sort of an evening image. So before I give up the floor here, just a few more things to mention, we had a, I think, a good community process, a very robust process, we met with the New Market Business Association, many of the electeds who represent this district as well as electeds who represent neighboring districts, we spoke with the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative.
Well, Mr. Will, we'll hear from them, so.
Okay, very good, very good, I'm sorry. Yeah, and so lastly, just mention that our neighbors at Suffolk Construction are also our contractors and I will stand down.
Okay, well, there may be some questions, so don't stand too far down.
I won't.
So the, what are the grades that are going to be in the school, the school cover?
The plan is currently for grades nine through twelve.
Nine through twelve, and that will replace what for the existing Roxbury Prep community?
It will replace a building that we are renting from Most Precious Blood in Hyde Park as well as a building which we are renting on Washington Street in Nubian Square, where the high school population is currently split.
And you are assuming that the bulk of the student population would come on public transportation via Mass Ave, is that the thinking?
Yeah, we're assuming the bulk of the students will come via public transportation, not necessarily all Mass Ave, of the Mass Ave, the Fairmont Line and probably some of them, it's about a five-minute walk over from the Nubian Square Transportation Center, maybe about seven minutes from there.
Okay, where is, I forget, how far is the Fairmont, nearest Fairmont Station?
It's about, well, actually, it's not about, it's right on the edge of our five-minute walking distance.
Okay.
And what about the red line, is the red line too far?
So the red line is, you know, you'd have to go, I think it's over the highway to get to Andrew Square. It is, however, I failed to mention this, because we're very excited about it, the New Market Business Improvement District, which has been passed, is starting, or has started, free shuttle buses, so there is a shuttle that will be running from the Andrew Square red line that we think our students can also take advantage of.
Okay.
Right, students coming from Dorchester would more likely want to be on the red line and they have to take a bus to Nubian and then walk, which is a generous seven-minute walk, I would think, from here.
The, you said there are forty-six parking spaces?
Correct.
And are those for staff and faculty, is that, that's intended use?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, they, yes, they will be totally for staff and we have about ninety to ninety-five staff members and we've done an inventory of public, publicly available parking in the area and believe that there is sufficient publicly available parking in addition to the bike rooms and the bike storage as well as the public transportation.
And the, that was my next question about the bike rooms, what about students who want to bike, is that possible?
They are very, they are encouraged to bicycle, I don't have the number offhand, but I think we have over fifty bike spaces.
Okay.
In the evening when there's basketball events, is, would the parking lot be available to families?
Yes, it would.
Okay, and then, I don't, I must have just missed it as things scroll by, the internal floor plans, are there elevators?
Yes, absolutely, there's a, there's one full elevator.
One full, one full elevator?
Correct, and two stairwells.
Okay.
Three stairwells, I'm sorry, three.
Okay, all right.
Are there, are there any sustainability benchmarks that the project is shooting for?
Yes, we are, we are shooting for lead gold and this is, will be a one-hundred percent electric building, we are bringing in no gas, so, and we are also negotiating as we speak to put full solar on the roof.
Thank you.
Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate.
Any other questions on the board, Ms. Piñato, anything else that you want to?
Well, I appreciate the street trees, are you adding street trees all along Proctor? It looks like in the renting there in front of your property and adjacent property, are those all street trees being added by the proponent?
Yes, we're putting, the improvements that we're doing are on our budding sidewalk, both Magazine Street and Proctor Street.
And you mentioned help with looking after the park, which I know has had some issues with, you know, public safety and needle disposal and safety with kids using it for the base, so can you talk about that?
Yeah, so we're in, we're in discussions with the Parks Commission, the Parks Department now, we actually, well, that would, because it is, of course, across the street from the parks, we need to go to them for approval as well following this process. We have offered financial payment to mitigate some of the costs and help with the safety. We have discussed a little bit how our pickup and drop-off zone will function so that we don't take away parking spaces for folks who want to use the park and we have talked about the fact that even though we will be living across the street, hopefully, we'd expect no special treatment, there's a lot of pressure on parks as folks know from school use and there are schools that use it for practices today and again, there was a concern that we would have expectations beyond what may be deserved and we do not, we look to be treated the same as any other school. Beyond that, we haven't had any formal discussions, but I think that, you know, the way we look at it, we will have four floors of our building overlooking that park and we expect to be very good stewards of that park.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have questions? All right, let's move to public, Mr. D'Amico, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of D'Amico BTD, and I was just wondering, is there going to be any electric parking stations located in the parking area?
Yes, there will be, I'm not sure, the entire, I think it's the entire row that fronts up against the building, so it's like eight or nine of them, we certainly satisfy the electric parking requirements by the city, so I think that we have, I, seven or eight fully electrified and the rest of them, I think, infrastructure can be electrified.
Okay, that's excellent, and finally, the school bus drop-off and pickup, is it going to be on street?
That's correct, it will be on the, on Proctor, Proctor Street is one-way, heading towards Mass Ave, so the pickup and drop-off zone will be on the park side of Proctor Street and we have requested a school zone for that of about five hundred feet.
Okay, thank you.
My final question, what's the expected capacity of the school, is it the, if you add the two, the Hyde Park and the Nubian locations now, is it the same or are you expecting expanded capacity?
So, good question. So, good question. We were building this for a capacity of 800 students. The current enrollment, if you added up, the Nubian and Hyde Park is less than that. I don't know exactly how much, but might be more like in the 600s. But the school, Roxbury Prep, has designed their, they have charter school approval for the 800 students, and have designed their programs for 800 high school students. The enrollment has been off a bit, and we think largely due to the split campus.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move to public testimony.
Can I speak in favor, Chair? This is Councilor Murphy, and thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for your presentation. I've been following your, I guess we can say struggles, trying to find a home for this great school. I was fortunate to attend the stepping up day at the Reggie Lewis last spring, and it's such a great community and well-deserving of a new home. And I do believe, working closely at Clifford Park and with Sue Sullivan at the bid, and I've talked to people at Suffolk Construction and with the Mason School right there, that you will be a wonderful neighbor, and looking forward to this passing, hoping that, you know, we can start building, because you'll be a great neighbor, and I just want to go on record for being in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Keesha Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant held the community process with BPDA. That received a lot of positive community feedback. It's not really residential area, so spoke with the budding businesses, met with elected officials, and are very excited as well to be the one built. So at this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, Mr. Chair, Mr. Secretary, we have two letters of support.
Peter, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Attorney Peter Calgrecy for the Abutter 75 Proctor Street LLC. My business address is 1 Boston Place, Boston, Massachusetts. Thank you for the time today. I just want to note a few points in opposition to this project, and the first point is that my client, as a director of Abutter, had never received an Abutter's notice to attend the meeting for this project. So a lot of these points may have come out then if they had gotten a notice. But the two primary problems with this project is, one, the traffic arrangement, you know, parking and traffic flow, and two is the contamination of the site. So as far as the traffic problem, there is a drop-off zone that the architect discussed a few moments ago, and it, and it just happens to fall directly in front of my client's front door. And this is a warehouse that they rent. Eighteen-wheelers, you know, come and go regularly, packages come and go regularly. And what's going to happen here is if there's a drop-off zone as proposed, essentially engulfing the building envelope of 75 Proctor Street, you're going to have a situation where there's parents and children trying to come and go from their vehicles, with eighteen-wheelers trying to get in down that street, or eighteen-wheelers blocking the drop-off activity. That's a direct conflict with the sole use of my client's property, it's just a warehouse. So, and the same is true on Magazine Street. There's actually a garage door entrance on that side where vehicles, you know, come and go out of that warehouse, and the same problem. There's going to be an immense amount of traffic in this area, which there already is, with very little off-street parking, and that's an inevitable problem. So our position is that this project needs to be scaled back. They need to reconfigure the site plan to account for more off-street parking at a minimum, to try to get ahead of these foreseeable issues. And then dropping a drop-off and pickup zone right in front of the, an active warehouse...
Okay, Mr. Calgrecy, thank you. You, I think, made the point very clearly. Mr. Baldwin, could you speak to this issue about locating the drop-off so that it's most effective and efficient and doesn't interfere with Abutters?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the pickup and drop-off on Proctor Street, again, the actual trucking entrance, if you will, the trucking doors to 75 Proctor is not on Proctor Street. There is one pedestrian double door on Proctor Street. The, we believe that most of the activities for loading happen on Norfolk Street. So our pickup and drop-off is not occurring in front of any place where I believe they would have any trucks backing in or anything.
But did you, did you say that the pickup and drop-off is on the opposite side of the Proctor from the building, or on the same side?
I did, yes.
Why is it, why isn't it on the same side?
Primarily so that when students are let out of their cars or buses, and there will be very few buses, they get out on the sidewalk rather than out into the street. So it's generally what we try to do with pickup and drop-off.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, other raised hands? Madam Ambassador?
Yes, Mayna Perez, okay.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mayna Perez representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of union members that live in Wall Street of Boston, I want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Caller 062252.
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe McEckren, City Council Frank Baker's office. I wasn't able to slip in my testimony. We want to go on record in support of the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Councilor Ring, support.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Peter, a part of the members' hand is raised again. Did you have additional?
Yes, I did mention my second point to the board, if I could have, you know, two minutes to do that.
All right, please be quick.
Yes, thank you, appreciate your time. As the board may know, this, this is a disposal site that is significantly polluted. There's been releases of contaminants as, as recent as April 12th, 2022, according to a DEP contingency plan notice. So what my client has asked for, we submitted a memorandum prior to today in opposition, is that the board delay a vote on this for at least three months, so that the proper due diligence on the environmental piece and the traffic question that we discussed a moment ago can be addressed, and then brought before this board again at that time, so you have a more complete, you know, view of the situation.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
All right, any other raised hands?
No, I said, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
I too am in support and, and I'm hopeful that the issue of the contaminants will be looked at as part of the overall process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's now 11:48. I'm going to call the 1130 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals. So if you're going to defer or withdraw your 1130 case, if you can give me the address first, please.
124126 Leyton Street, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Counselor. For the calling into the record, case BOA 1303397124 Leyton Street. There is a companion case, BOA 1303651126 Leyton Street. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, requesting administrative deferral on this.
Can I have a motion, please? Motion to defer.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
I am too in favor, do we have a date?
You'll have a date of January 10th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 1130 cases?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Attorney Jonathan Gold.
Address first, please.
873 Beacon Street, Boston.
All right, hold on two seconds, sir, thank you. What was the address again, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is 4011 to 4019 Washington Street, Boston.
Okay, thank you. Case BOA 10941294011 to 4019 Washington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jonathan Gold, 873 Beacon Street, Boston, and I'm the attorney for petitioner. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The petitioner is requesting a second deferral on this project. The reason being is that we last appeared before the board on September 13th, but the board did not have the benefit of the updated floor plans and project description that was a project that had been, was BPDA Board approved on July 14th. On September 30th, we submitted new plans to the ZBA ISD. Unfortunately, we did not receive that updated letter from ISD until Friday, it was dated October 27th.
Okay, Mr. Gold, I, thank you for the explanation, but you can actually just request administrative deferral, and you're entitled for that, so.
No, fine, so we will request the administrative deferral.
Motion to defer.
Second. Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, do we have a date?
You'll have a date of January 31st at 11:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, my man.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 1130 cases? There are none, I'll go back to the 1030 cases. Calling case BOA 13414673407 to 3409 Washington Street. This is to construct a new 22,600 square foot mixed-use building. Project will consist of 29 residential units plus 400 square feet of community commercial space on the ground level and seven parking spaces. Violation, Article 8, Section 7, the use is forbidden. Article 8, Section 7, the use is conditional. Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking and loading is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 55, Section 9, the building has excessive integrity. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Matt Kiefer. I'm an attorney at Goulston and Stores, and my address is 7 Serena Road in Jamaica Plain. On my right is Kevin Diebler of Rhodey Architects, the project architect, and on my left is Dave Trabour, the development manager from the Trabour Companies. And the site owner, our client, Jigar Patel, is also on the screen of SNH Development. So as you said in the introduction, this is 29 units of housing that we would, the project is basically to replace a tow lot in Jamaica Plain with an all-electric, lead gold, solar PV, contextually designed, 29-unit housing development that's consistent with JP Rocks planning principles, and has roughly twice the amount of affordability that would be required by IDP. The project's been endorsed by the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee and approved by the BPDA Board. You can see the location there, the context, it is in a local industrial sub-district, and you can see adjacent to the back, a residential district, a two-family, 4,000 residential district. It's a five-minute walk, literally a five-minute walk, maybe not even a five-minute walk from Green Street Tea Station, about a 10-minute walk from Forest Hills Multimodal Transit Station and on-a-bus line. So you'll see the unit mix here of these 29 units in a four-story building with seven parking spaces and also significant indoor bike parking, one space per unit, 29 spaces in the building, and some sidewalk spaces as well. I mentioned that we, housing affordability, we have earned our additional density under the JP Rocks formula. As Secretary Fortune said, the underlying FAR is 1.0. We are seeking zoning relief for FAR of a little over two, a little over two, and we earned that additional density through additional affordability. The IDP would require three units at 70% of AMI, plus a contribution for the fractional affordability. We are proposing six units, two of which are at 30% of AMI, which is even lower than JP Rocks requires of 50% AMI. And this affordability has been discussed at some length with BPDA and accepted as being compliant with JP Rocks. I also want to mention, this is a very green building, Berto 2.0 compliant, an all-electric building with solar PV and lead gold. We made a number of changes to the design of the project that Kevin is going to walk you through in a minute. I do want to make sure that the board appreciates, this, this building has been nipped and tucked in many ways over a course of really three years plus, in response to comments and concerns from Abutters, from the BPDA, from BTD, and others. So with that, I'm happy to go through the zoning if the board would like. We are seeking zoning relief. I'll do this very briefly and happy to entertain any questions. Mentioned FAR, also zoning relief for building height, 35 feet is the underlying height. We would be at about 48 feet, four stories, which is really consistent with what's becoming the context on Washington Street, where four and five-story buildings are now under construction or completed. The off-street parking is, we think, appropriate, given its location, so close to transit. We're seeking relief from that. And because we're in a local industrial district, multifamily residential use is a forbidden use. We comply with all other zoning requirements, including rear yard and usable open space. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kevin to walk you through the project design. Kevin Diebler of Rhodey Architects.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time this morning. This is a good slide to start off with. I think that we really look at the design of this building as being shaped by our process. The site plan itself is a kind of an exhibit of that. In the rear, one of our key adjacencies is to the union ave, neighbors, is a 20-foot setback, which is compliant, JP Rocks, and the underlying zoning as well. Those would be private areas for the new residents facing other residential districts. On the other side, Washington Street, you can see the increased sidewalk and the reduced curb cut down to about 10 feet to enhance the condition of the sidewalk and add a street treat. We have also balanced the need in the neighborhood for parking with the sort of future transit-oriented nature of the neighborhood. But parking was a key feature of something that we resolved and worked into the, into the design. You also see the vault for the transformer within the footprint of that drive zone, and you also can see that making considerable effort for bike storage, trash, and support services to be fully enclosed within the footprint of enclosed interior space. We also have a small community retail space, which we're calling. We use that term because it's a very small footprint, about 400 square feet, something we see as being integral to getting tenants off the ground. You can come to the next slide. You can start to see that the footprints for the second and third floor versus the fourth floor start to show where we began to step the building back from those setbacks and the nature of facing and creating a prominent street, street wall on Washington Street that's on the property line. But then portions of it on the sides increase to six and seven feet on the edges and 20 feet in the rear. Up above, on the fourth floor, again, it sort of steps back to reduce the effect of appearance of the mass. Continue, one more slide. Very recently, we have been continuing to work with the neighbors, continuing to shape the building with the meetings and the kind of engagement we've had. This unit 27 that you can see on the right side was a bit of a change and shift, and we've very recently discussed this with the planner viewer, the refusal letter's been corrected and updated to that to reflect that. That change is again a further reflection of our intent to continue to work with the neighborhood up until even the last few weeks, we've been in contact with them. Continue to... Come, continue to, to roll through the slides, a couple more renderings. Start to show that the, the material usage and the setbacks and the depth and the articulation of the facade is something that we're balancing with masonry, terracotta and quilted metal fabric or quilted metal panel. These are all kind of contextual materials done in a contemporary way. Again, something we feel that we see coming down Washington Street and wanting to maintain this character of what the building next door to it, which is a masonry building. And again, kind of continuing to use the J P language on Washington Street. One more slide shows a kind of enlarged view and rendering of that street front. We can see additional kind of curb cut reduction, screening, sort of a heavy masonry base there to screen that parking. And sort of elements of that metal material starting to, to find its way at the sort of very ground floor and the retail lobby entrance. Is something again that we feel has been a, a, a high-quality use of materials that again, continuing to roll through the other elevations, you can see that this effort has been started to kind of wrap around the other edges and, and each and every kind of corner of facade here has been, I would say, very closely worked with neighbors. And talking about where decks go or step backs are occurring, what materials we're using, the modulation of windows occur. Not only are we sort of emphasizing that the Washington Street facade is important, but also are the sides and rear are just as important. The last slide or the next slide shows again the very most recent work with the Union Ave neighbors especially show that this kind of intent to break up the rear facade is not just the back of a building, but something that these residents will be living with. So we really made an effort to continue that high-quality material use around and make it a scale appropriate for residences built in this day and age. So I think that really kind of wraps up our process, the shaping by the neighborhood. It's been like nothing I've sort of witnessed. It's, it's a lot of options that we showed about the balance of affordability with parking and retail. We even started with a hotel about three years ago. And then ended up moving from a five-story building to a four-story residential building with the uses that you see today. So our public meetings are all part of the record and they're part of the process.
All right, we'll get to the neighborhood, the community's process. So yeah, I'm, I live five minutes away from, from this project. Very familiar with what's happened with the sort of Eccleson, the Forest Hills corridor in the last number of years in terms of the incredible expansion of multi-unit housing. Couple of questions about this in particular. First of all, I'm a little confused about the four hundred square foot community space in the front, what that intent is. And the second thing is I'm sort of struck by, from, for a lot of the projects that have been built in this area, there's a little bit more, the units tend to be larger. There seems to be really purposefully focused on studios and one bedrooms. And I'm wondering what the rationale for that is.
Yeah, so, Dave, I'm going to ask you to answer the, you know, intent about the community commercial space and also the unit mix. Dave Trabort from Trabort Companies Development Manager, Mr. Chair.
So a couple of things, the community space was really driven by the community process to have some kind of storefront. Knowing that it's going to be small, the idea is something that can either be an artist's studio or gallery space, can be
A bakery.
Something that serves the community and the immediate community. Bakery and, and really we're open to any and all ideas as we continue to work with the community about what that should be. As far as the unit mix, I was actually involved in a building in J P that had studios, it was a sort of renovation rehab, mostly studios and one bedrooms. And one of the overwhelming things we heard from people was there's not a lot of options of this, of studios frankly, in Jamaica Plain. And love the neighborhood, want something small, want something for myself. And so our market study really backs up the need for this type of housing really close to transit with lots of, lots of bike parking as well.
It, I mean, it just strikes me that, that, well, and to the degree that the, the city is trying to encourage kind of families to stay within the city, this is much more aimed at a transient population where I think there'll be a high degree of turnover.
You know, we, we would certainly expect turnover, this will be a rental property. But we've, we've also seen based on our other projects that people really do stay. There's certainly a lot of people who, who, you know, single or couples that stay for quite a while in, in the rental properties that we've been involved in.
There's six two-beds, right?
Yes, there are.
There are six two-beds. Yes, Mr. Chair, there are six two-beds. I mean, it's weighted.
Yeah, no, no, I, I know.
Six bedroom units, yeah.
Yeah, it just did strike me that this is a little bit tilted towards a, a studio on one bed of the mixes that have been built along that corridor. All right, Ms. Barazza, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate. Are you, are you going to have a management company to deal with the trash?
Yes, yes, we will. And there is an indoor trash room, I think it
Yeah, I just, I see it.
Yeah, with it, with its own direct route out to the, to the curb.
Yeah, I see that. And in terms of the community space, I would encourage you to, to title it, whether it's really, whether it's retail and it's affordable retail for local artisan. But to leave it out just as a community space, I, I feel like it's a grab-all. I appreciate that you guys are working with the community in terms of what that could be. But the reality is, is, you know, real estate is expensive in Jamaica Plain. So if there's, if you, if you label it, there could be a way to make this a destination that is affordable to the community.
All right, that's the intent. Thank you.
Any, any questions on the board? Okay, can we move to public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. This proposal went through an extensive community process over the course of many years, lots of input from residents and the Butters. As you also heard from the applicant's representation, they received support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council as well as the B P D A board. With that, we defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Connor, was there a discussion about the, the unit mix and the sort of tilt toward smaller studio and, and one bedrooms?
From what I understand, I, I don't have all of the information, you know, I was not the liaison for that area. You know, I think folks looked at the deep affordability as a potential way to offset that, but.
That's obviously an attractive feature, no doubt.
Sure, so, but I, I'm afraid I can't comment more than that.
I, I do have a quick question on the affordability for the thirty percent A M I units. Do you expect to get, you know, rental vouchers for those units? How are you making them affordable to a thirty percent population?
They're, so they're underwritten in the pro forma to a, to a thirty percent A M I level. There are no project-based vouchers certainly, but people who come with vouchers, then obviously we would accept them.
Yeah, I mean, it's typical that thirty percent people are usually close to zero income people. So typically in a thirty percent A M I affordability ban, you would see a section eight. But potentially you're, you're going to attract people that put section eight certificates in that, in that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with more public testimony.
You have a few raised hands here, one second. Mine up for rest, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, mine up for rest representing the carpenters, want to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Alan, I sent a request to unmute you, can you state your name and call out what's on the record, please?
Hi, Alan Benenfeld, Thirty-Six Union Avenue, a direct Butter to this project. We have been working with the developer for quite a number of years. And the project has evolved to the state that you have currently seen. The Butters have still a number of issues regarding the project. The two most important, but they are not by any means all, is the design of the rear facade. The developer is working well in that direction in terms of making the design of that facade much more exciting to the community. The right half is well along on the rear side. The left half of that facade still needs a great deal of work. I believe the developer is aware of that, but this is on a trajectory to being resolved. The other major issue has to do with the step backs of the fourth floor. Currently, it is only a six-foot depth, barely over the minimum of the planned J P Rock's requirements. And this is really insufficient mitigation to the Butters, particularly because we have a rather long view corridor directly from Union Avenue. It's twenty feet wide looking towards this building. So the, this issue is still outstanding from the perspective of the.
Request to unmute you, can you state your name and active?
What happened to Mr. Benenfield?
He was still talking?
Did he mute himself?
I think he got cut off.
Not sure.
Hi, am I back?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I have no idea how that happened. I don't know where you last heard me.
No, no, we, we, about, about the, the design, the setbacks, we, we were, hopefully you're close to wrapping up.
Yes, we have proposed to the board because it's very, very important that the community still participate in this design process. And we have an old Butters letter to the board recommended that if there is a proviso to go forward to design review that it allow for and include participation by representatives from the Butters in that discussion.
Okay, thank you, Madam Ambassador, very helpful, Mr. Benenfield.
Thank you.
Thank you in consideration. Anybody else?
Yeah, Guido over?
Yes, hi, hi, my name is Guido Bartoli, I'm a direct Butter from New York Avenue. Three concerns, very quickly, one is about the A C exchangers. So I understand that there are twenty-nine units, I don't know where all these heat exchangers are going to be placed. They're going to be on the top of the building, they're going to add height, we already, you know, we're well in height of this building, plus noise and, and also heat. Another concern is about the trash. I understand that they are going to have a company dealing with the trash. On the floor plan, I see only eight containers, there are twenty-nine units, so I don't think the two things are really aligned as size. And finally, the third concern is I don't see any curb cut for delivery and shipping and removing since this is going to be, you know, people, this is going to have fair amount of turnover. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with B P D A design review, paying special attention to residential concerns on the rear to discuss issues of trash management with the developer and to also take into consideration loading or drop balls with Ubers on the property. And also another proviso to adhere to the six proposed affordable units at seventy and thirty A M I with the one hundred and five thousand I D P fund contribution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Mr. Ogero?
Yes.
And I too am in favor of the motion, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling D F A.
You know what, Mr. Uh, Mr. Fortune, it's twelve fifteen. Um, we were, we were rolling along there, kind of slowed down a little bit. I think people could probably use a break. Why don't we take a break now and reconvene at twelve thirty? Very well.
Recording stopped.